This is the July 11, 2013 Village of Indian Head Park Village Board of Trustees regular meeting. Court please call the roll.
Mayor Andrews.
Here.
Trustee Schnopper.
Here.
Trustee Walsh.
Here.
Trustee Bailey.
Not here.
Trustee Hinshaw.
Not here.
Trustee Alonzo.
Here.
Trustee Whittemberg.
Here.
Please stand and we'll pledge allegiance.
We are the citizens of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
First order of business actually in this part of this public hearing regarding proposed appropriations ordinance for fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2013 and ending April 30th, 2014. The law, unlike for the budget, the law requires us to pass an appropriations ordinance and also later in the year, a tax levying ordinance. They're required by law, they're very important to the financial viability of the village going forward, and we do have an ordinance tonight for our review. We do need to get it passed by this month. And I will have Dave give us a briefing on it here momentarily, but I did have an email from Trustee Bailey that I would like to, he asked that I would read into the record for him dated this morning. Mayor Andrews, unfortunately, I am unable to attend the July 11, 2013 meeting of the Village Board of Trustees. I had every intention of being present, but a last minute change in a personal matter has taken me out of town. I regret this as I believe this is the first meeting I have missed in my over six plus years serving as trustee. And as the public works liaison, I wanted to be present for the discussion on the street maintenance plan. I know Chief Alonso, Superintendent Santon, and Trustee Whittemberg have reviewed the materials provided to date, and I'm sure it can explain where we stand on this issue today. In light of not being able to attend, I would request if possible that you read this email in its entirety at the board meeting, as I am very aware of the important task of voting on the proposed ordinance making appropriations for general corporate and for special purposes for the Village of Indian Head Park. Based on my prior experience on the board, I am fully aware that the law requires the Board of Trustees to pass an appropriations ordinance by the end of this month so that the village can continue to operate and meet its obligations. In that vein, I have reviewed the proposed appropriations ordinance, and if present, I would vote in favor of passage of it. Again, I apologize for not being able to be present in person at the meeting. I look forward to seeing all of you at the next month's board meeting. Trustee Brian Bailey. Okay, Dave, would you lead us on the, give some review of the appropriations ordinance, please?
Sure, I'll review it by sections and the general corporate and the special purpose after that. Just a little refresher, this is the document created from the budget. We have budgeted numbers plus a 25 percent contingency in each line item. Again, that doesn't mean we're going to spend this, it's just, I believe I ask the village council this every year. It's to have these contingencies in there makes it so we don't have to, if you go over in a specific line item, we don't have to do another public hearing and another appropriations ordinance. It's basically one of those things to debate on time and work with. So it is important that we have the budget done before this was, I wish, are available for inspection. We didn't get it available for inspection pending before, it's been online and available for inspection in front of the office since July 1st. That being said, Article 1 is for general corporate purposes. Section 1 is for president and village board, and the total of that section is $55,250. Section 2 is administration department, total appropriation for section 2, $237,430. Section 3, public works, total appropriation, $295,273. Section 4, police, total appropriation, $1,526,696. Section 5, buildings and grounds, total appropriation, $57,188. Section 6 is the building department, total appropriation, $22,750. Section 7, planning and zoning commission, total appropriation, $2,500. Section 8, fire and police commission, total appropriation, $5,250. Section 9 is for general and other accounts, total appropriation for that, $484,000. Allowing another 5 percent contingencies over the entire general purpose funds, the total corporate fund appropriations, $2,821,299. Section 10 is for water, that is, $1,410,491. Section 11, sewer, $134,498. General and other for water and sewer, $43,233. Again, another 5 percent contingency, total water and sewer fund, $1,667,632. Section 13 is for motor fuel tax fund, that's one, including contingency, $144,254. Section 14, E911, including contingency, $67,601. The total appropriation for all general corporate purposes, $4,707,92. Article 2 would be the special purposes.
Dave, can I interrupt? I may have misheard you, but the total E911 is $67,607.
Including that contingency.
Including that contingency, thanks.
Article 2 is the special purposes. Section 1 is Illinois Retirement Fund, it's $206,366. Section 2 is social security, $145,564. Section 3 is audit, $39,525. Section 4 is general liability insurance, $93,380. Section 5 is the bond and interest, $193,626. Section 6 is special parks, CR, it's $31,009. The total appropriation for all those special services is $709,470. Corporate and special combined in the total of the amount of the appropriations ordinance for fiscal year 2013 and 14, $5,410,262.
Thank you. All right, first, we will entertain public comments in a moment, just any questions or comments by your trustees. Trustee Andrews.
Dave, I'm sorry I didn't hear the beginning. The formula, how you take the budget and massage it and add the contingencies to this, can you go over that?
Yeah, each line item, if that's in the budget, is in this appropriations ordinance, and 25 percent is added on top of the budget.
And then at the end of the column, you add another 5 percent?
Five percent.
Okay. And that's across the board done, or 40, or none or 20?
None, it's 25 on every line item plus 5 percent of about each section, if you will.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll open it to for public question or comment. Okay, thank you. Hearing none, then the chair would entertain a motion to approve appropriations ordinance for general corporate and for special purposes for the Village of Indian Head Park, Cook County, Illinois for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2013 and ending April 30th, 2014.
So we do. We're going to close the public hearing.
Okay. Then, I would, the chair would entertain a motion to close the public portion of this public hearing.
Motion.
A motion by trustee Lachlan, first.
Second.
Second by trustee Walsh, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Anya Chair, the ayes have it. The public comment section was closed, and now the chair would entertain a motion to approve an ordinance making appropriations for general corporate and for special purposes for the Village of Indian Head Park, Cook County, Illinois for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2013 and ending April 30th, 2014. Move by trustee Schnopper, is there a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Lachlan, would the court please call the roll?
Trustee Schnopper.
Yes.
Trustee Lachlan.
Yes.
Trustee Bailey.
Yes.
Trustee Walsh.
Yes.
Trustee Hinshaw.
Yes.
Trustee Whittemberg.
Yes.
What did that say?
Okay, thank you. Next item of business we will move to then is the mayor's report. I just have a couple of quick comments. First of all, everybody should know by now, actually by now should have purchased their vehicle stickers for 2013 and 2014. The deadline for the purchase at the normal price will be next, or actually this coming Monday, July 15th, and then Tuesday, the 16th, the fee doubles and you'll be subject to citation. We've had some discussion, and there's concern about people who do not buy them, so I would suggest that chief or police be especially vigilant in enforcing that ordinance, and for the people who have not purchased them, you still have two business days that could do that. A next item of business I wanted to bring up, I just left it in there, but recently received a report from something called the Insurance Services Organization concerning the Pleasant View Fire Protection District, and this is actually coincidental and good timing in following up what trustee Hinshaw had mentioned at the May board meeting, and Tom, correct me if I'm to speak, I think you had indicated due reclassification or reclassification on fire protection, that you actually received some level of a refund. And the nature of this report was to advise us that based on their survey in which input from the fire department and Indian Head Park and our communities, and they identified all the people, and that Santon responded on our behalf. Pleasant View Fire Protection District gets a classification of number 2 on a scale of 1 to 10, only number 1 being the highest. In the report, one graph showed that there's actually, I can't say it's all the communities because I'm not sure the extent of participation, but there's only seven other communities that have, there's only seven communities that have a higher rating, which is a 1. So the point is, we have very good fire protection district, and they use these classifications, again as trustee Hinshaw had pointed out in May, to determine what we pay on our homeowner's insurance. So if you care to, you may want to contact your insurance companies and find out if they're determining your rate on the basis of having fire protection with a class 2 rating, and does that affect your premium and perhaps a refund of any premium they've already charged you by perhaps lowering it in the future. So I just wanted to call that to everyone's attention.
Mr. Mayor, a question?
Yes.
Would it be possible in the spokes signals to put like a sample letter or that the, all the residents could actually send to their insurance company? I don't know how realistic it is to ask everyone to probably gurgitate what you just said, obviously I think we're well informed, but the spokes signals, if we basically had a, like insurance company, here's the information, and the resident could sign it and send it in, that'd make it beneficial.
Okay, that's a good idea, I think we could do that. Would you care to draft that letter for us to put?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Nice job. Thank you.
What is the, the deadline for this wholesome?
Haven't been determined yet, but you still have a little, probably have been, you know, been amongst them now.
Sounds good, I'll take care of it.
Okay, thank you. And another item that I want to call the people's attention, and this is hopefully a very small implication in the village, but this deals with the people who have the disability plates and/or parking placards. The Secretary of State sent out a letter to, I guess, all cities and municipalities that will be explaining that beginning in 2014, the state of Illinois is introducing, pursuant to new law, a new type of disability placard, so they will still have the disability plates, and they are now going to go and, you probably won't be able to see it too soon, but I intend to ask Dave to scan this brochure and put it online, but they will have four different types of placards, and they mean something different. The one with the yellow and gray stripe here, I don't know if you can just at least visualize, it's yellow. That would be something that will exempt people from having to pay parking meters. The fact of having a, as I understand this, and this is not from a thorough study on my trial, I confess, but in certain classifications, you can still use a, this handicap parking place, but doesn't necessarily mean if you're somewhere you can park and not have to pay the meter. So, and they will have a different, that there will be a temporary type, the one that is permanent and excludes, actually you have to qualify for it to be able to get out from paying the parking meters, then there will be a permanent type, and one issued to organizations that typically transport people with disabilities and handicaps. I'm not certain of the mechanism the Secretary of State is using to contact individuals, but he does state in here that there's going to be several hundred thousand new disability plates and/or placards being issued. It reminds people that if you park in a handicap parking place, the minimum fine is $250, and if you have such a parking, disabled parking placard or plate, and you're misusing it, that can lead to a $600 fine. So we'll try to get this up online for people, but if this applies to you, and you want to find out more about it, and you have not been contacted, then I would suggest you contact the Secretary of State's office because they're the ones that will bring you to that program. They are sending out those. Okay, great. Lastly, a, something that I'm very pleased about is I would like to report that we have received a check from the Timber Trails Development Company as a first check in the connection with their renewed commitment to us to pay the balance of the impact fee that was committed to us back when Timber Trails Development started going, as they committed to other entities in the area. We had collected 300 of the 500,000, and they had also paid for the sidewalk along Plainfield from 294 to Wolf Road on the south side of the street, and then they had some hard times, but the upshot is the current entity that is the developer has, we tried to keep after it, and it took some time, but we were able to be successful. I had announced this, it's been some time ago, and I didn't have a chance to look up when, but I had talked about that they had made a commitment, they will pay us the $200,000. It will be reimbursed to us in a graduated fashion based on them building and selling units and actually getting occupancy permits. The first 10 occupancy permits will get us $1,000 apiece, so as of the end of May, they apparently have forgotten seven new ones, and we received a check for $7,000. Now, three more, it will get us to the first 10, that'll be three more thousand, and then I believe it's the next 30, after that it goes up to 2,000 per permit, and then after that, the next 30 is 3,000, and then I think there's like about 12 left, because we've got to add that up to 72, but the last 12 will get 5,000 for each permit. There's in excess of 280 units that they have or plan to sell over there, and they only have to get occupancy permits on the first 72, and we will have our 200,000 back that they, I shouldn't say back, but that they had committed to. At the time I announced that renewed commitment from Timber Trails, I indicated that it would be my preference that all the money coming in, in connection with the impact fee, be used toward a street maintenance and repaving program in the village. I, you know, that's not my sole decision to make, and I'm aware of that, so I'm going to ask Dave to put this deposited in a general account or wherever, set up a separate account, but that'll be something that the board will have to take up at a future time, and I think in connection with our discussions on the street maintenance program, that might be the proper time to indicate what we want to do, if we want to earmark this impact fee. In effect, it's found money, because, you know, we saw that happen, we can't spend it until we have it, but at least now we have a head start. Okay, that's all I have on the mayor's report, so we'll move along to the financial report for the month ending May 31st, 2013. Chair, would you please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you mentioned, tonight I have a financial report for the village for the month of May 2013. For the month of May, the revenue was $258,365.81. The expenditures, $426,865.81. At the end of May, all funds, the village had $1,301,472.61. I'd also like to mention, and as I'm sure everyone's aware, the real estate taxes were out. The collections should start coming fairly soon, and by the end of August, I would imagine that the village would have the bulk of their real estate tax collections. Of course, they, they will come in, some people pay late, and so there's always a little bit that comes every single month, but the bulk of it should be here ready at the moment. And that's my question.
Okay, thank you. Trustees, questions or comments?
I've got three questions, I'm sorry, being the new guy trying to learn. Register 734, there's a payment to West Central Cable Agency for $1,327.
Yes, AT&amp;T, U-verse, they're not playing nice with us. We get the PEG fees, Comcast PEG fees.
Which is PEG?
PEG is Public Education and Governmental Television. Those, that's, that's on AT&amp;T's part of 1% of the gross revenues. We asked them when U-verse started if they'd mind sending that 1% to West Central Cable Agency, which Indian Head Park is one of five towns, and the other four are Western Springs, Lagrange, Lagrange Park, and Riverside. There are five original Jones Inter Cables surrounded in a sea of media one for as far as the agency, and that's how we ended up in our intergovernmental agreement for those reasons. Anyway, they only apply to Lagrange to have the 1% PEG fees carved out from the 5% franchise fee, so the cable agency gets Lag ranges directly. The other four towns, they, AT&amp;T sends us one check, broken down on the form and width, with the 5% franchise fee or video, whatever the state calls it. Now, the 5% video part, which is the village's money, but they also include that 1% PEG, which belongs to the West Central Cable Agency. So basically, we get quarterly payments, we get about $6,500 for our section, and the other 1,300 is the PEG part, which we paid to, which we paid to West Central Cable Agency. So, in and out.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd like to keep going, next page, register 735, there's two bills, Lowlight Power Products Company for $3,300, and Nycor for $600.
Nycor would be natural gas. We have a number of free terms throughout the year, and once those are up, we pay.
Okay, but that's over and above our $200.
Right, right, and that went, just probably the first month, year we've, our first month we've done it, so from here on out, you'll see Nycor every month, or should see every month. I did do some checks today for Nycor. Olinay Power Products, offhand, I don't know, maybe it could help, I'm not sure what.
Yeah, that's for standby generators at the Public Works facility and also at the village office.
Thank you.
That's it, okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, hearing none, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the financial report as of May 31st, 2013, as presented by Chair Dr. Dusel. Move by trustee Schnopper, is there a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Whittemberg. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Anya Chair, the ayes have it, motion carries. Next item of business is the approval of the board meeting minutes. This is the regular board meeting of June 13, 2013. Any changes or additions on any of the first three pages? Pages 4 or 5? 6 or 7? 8 or 9?
Yes.
Trustee Hinshaw.
Near the middle of the page, in the bigger paragraph, there is a sentence that says, "Trustee Hinshaw further stated that he is concerned with raising the vehicle sticker fee because he believes there's a fairly high percentage, about 20 to 40 percent, in parentheses." And I believe what I said in that was concerned with raising vehicle stickers fee because, and the new part is, "After talking with village staff, I received estimates of about 20 to 40 percent."
Can you add "after" the word "because," "after talking with village staff"?
I received estimates of between 20 and 40, or 20 to 40, if I want to do that.
20 to 40 percent.
And you should say the rest of the sentence?
Yes.
Okay. Anything, anything else on that page 9? Page 10? About 11 or 12? 16 or 17? 18 or 19? 20 or 21? Hearing none, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes for the meeting of June 13, 2013, as amended as indicated by trustee Hinshaw.
How many motion?
By trustee Walsh, second by trustee Hinshaw, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Anya Chair, the ayes have it, motion carries. Okay, we'll move to the agenda items. First item is approval of amendment to the 2013, 2014 fiscal year budget, and the chair would recognize Dave Brent to brief us on why we need to do this already.
I have written a memo and some pages in your board deck of residents, is there Harers? I'm going to go through the comments.
Is Mr. Harers present tonight by any chance? Okay, it's a resident who calls some information to our attention, but I'll let Dave continue.
He emailed some questions and comments about the budget to the mayor, and one of the comments, or questions, he discovered a formula error in the spreadsheet, and it was to tune up $68,000. We added, central dispatch fund are expensive, we're normally paid 100% out of E911 funds. Over time, the expenses for central dispatch are more than we receive in E911 revenue. Over time, that E911 fund became overdrawn or in a red. So the auditors brought this to our attention and recommended that the police department and the general fund pick up the difference between, plus a little more, in order to get the fund back up to zero and just have it be a self-sufficient thing from that point forward. So in creating the additional lines in the budget in Excel, I found out, it was a hard way now, that if you add a line in between a section with a formula at the bottom of it, it automatically includes that additional line too. As account numbers would have it in our financing system and the budget in number order, it went to the top of the section. When it goes to the top of the section, this is not updated formula. He brought this to my attention, I went over every formula. He brought this to my attention. I went over every formula, found that with the gaming tax revenue side, the same thing happened. So numbers litter at the top of the section that formula is not up there. I went back and looked at every single formula in that budget. I asked Treasurer Bussa to do the same. And I can assure you that all formulas in there are correct.